To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Al.
Here.
Mr. Beistall. Mr. Claro.
Here.
Mrs. Love.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rose.
Here.
Mrs. Shipley.
Here.
Mr. Bass.
Here. All present, citizens comments? We have no comment cards this evening. Minutes. Next week you'll be asked to approve the minutes of the February 5th discussion meeting and the February 12th voting meeting. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, finance, finance reports? You'll be asked to also approve the financial report and the treasures report if the bank statement is available by that time. Budget discussion, Mr. Marnell.
My first handouts are going to be regarding what was said a few days ago by Governor Tom Wolf. And then this separate printout, basically the same thing as that, as that top handout except it has all the school systems in Westmoreland County and Fayette. I think all of us are probably very familiar now with what Governor Wolf has proposed. Very bold, very ambitious plan. Can certainly see that, in my mind, it's going to be a long drawn out budget discussion at the state level, probably go down to the wire, as usual. But he's proposing, you know, the effect for Southmoreland would be an increase of subsidies of $558,000. A little over 5%. That's a lot of money. We certainly would like to see that. But I, myself, will not hold my breath on that, but we shall see what comes to pass. He's proposing a 7% increase in the basic education subsidy and to continue funding the accountability block grant. He's proposing some changes in charter school reimbursement. He's increasing, proposing an increase of special education subsidy of 9.6%. Now, part of his charter school restructuring is he wants to set a new charter school tuition rate. He wants to make the tuition rate for a regular education student next year at $5,950. Now, under the current formula, Southmoreland is paying $8,848 per regular education student. Currently, we have 40 students in that category. So that would be savings, if this comes to pass, of $2,898 per student. Multiply that by the 40 we got, assuming we have 40 next year, that would be a savings of almost $116,000. He's also proposing changes to the special education charter school rate. And we'll have to sit down with Mr. Clara and look at these, how he's categorizing the special education students. He's going to take that base rate, tuition rate of $5,000, $950, he's going to add to that $3,035 for special education students who fall into what he calls a category 1. And they claim that 95% of all cyber charter school students are in that category 1. We currently have 10 students that are in cyber charter schools that we are being charged a special education tuition rate of $18,149. So if I can assume that all of our 10 kids are in category 1, that would be a savings of $9,164 per student, or a little over $91,000. However, if a student would fall into what he calls a category 2 classification, they would add to that, that base rate, another $16,482. And if any of those students would be in a category 3 status, an additional $38,000. So it's, without knowing these 10 students and what category they fall in, pretty hard to predict what our potential savings would be. So I'm not sure exactly, in my mind, whether I go with the governor's number for our first draft budget, or if I just keep our subsidies the same and then we just wait and see what happens. And he's also has some other far-reaching programs in mind, you just have to read the details and decide for yourselves whether it's a good plan or not. I know he wants to raise the personal income tax rate from 3.07 to 3.7, which is about a 20, 21% increase in personal income tax rate, and he wants to raise sales tax from 6% to 6.6, a 10% increase there, and a whole category of items that are non-taxable now to be taxable. So, we'll see what happens there. But we wanted to give you that information so that you have it. And, oh, you want to talk? No, 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 let's go ahead.
On the taxes, was the other side of that, though, also some relief on the property tax side that he was proposing?
Yes, as I understand, the one method for funding the increase in school subsidies would be from the 5% severance tax on the extraction of the Marcellus shell. And perhaps the, the funding of property tax reduction would come from the additional revenues gleaned from the increase in state income taxes and state sales tax. Not exactly sure how all that's going to take place, we'll just have to wait and see for further instructions and, and information as they go through the deliberation process. They might funnel the property tax reduction through to us just like the gambling proceeds are funneled out, if they, the reduction of rebate, so to speak, on your property tax bills. It may work out the same way. I know it's a pretty ambitious plan, so we'll see what, what comes to pass. I'm sure there're going to be a lot of negotiations and going to, going to take place. As far as the, the budget, I do not have the first draft done, I'm probably a good working week away from completing all the expenditures and completing a first draft on the revenues. But I just wanted to summarize on this one sheet where we're at right now. The two big areas of the budget obviously are projected salaries, wages, and, and benefits. And we're, you know, finalizing negotiations with our school teachers. So I'm waiting for that final ratification, plus, you know, we're going through all our list of employees and projecting out their, their new pay rates for next year. And of course, tied to those numbers are what we'll need to pay in social security and state retirement. I think we discussed in January, the new state retirement rate is increasing 21%, so that will be another significant line item. And of course, the, the governor has, has plans for, for trying to tackle the, the pension situation, but again, more details need to be forthcoming on that. The rest of the expenditures are shaping up. Again, please do not hold me to these numbers as being final for the first round. But most departments have gotten in their requests, and I know there's still some, some final thoughts on textbooks and some other items. I put some, some notes at the very bottom, some with question marks. Again, we're looking at the high school gym floor, the bleacher and divider situation. We had a, you know, a meeting last week at the gym, so, you know, estimates are coming in for that, and of course, you know, we'll be discussing with you to get final directions on that project. What the final dollar amount will be, could be in the high 80s to 100-plus range. We have built into the budget $324,000 in technology replacement items, computers, networking, a, a new robo-call system for, for sending out messages to the parents. And of course, you know, we can let Mr. Pushkar talk about the technology. I know Lee and I have been talking about further needs in, in the maintenance department, in, in buildings and grounds. We still have some paving spots that we would like to bring to your attention, and Lee's getting estimates there. And he's, you know, taking a good, hard look at both the Ruffsdale and primary center buildings and, and needs that they have, and we'll culminate. Perhaps we could set a special meeting, maybe the last week in March, and we can go over the, the first draft. And then we'll have a complete list of items that, that will be needed, so. The, the budget is shaping up.
We set that date, the next meeting, and for the Finance Council meeting to get together, review the draft as a separate item issue, instead of having it as part of our regular meeting?
Yeah, just make it a separate, you know, budget discussion meeting.
In March?
Any questions for Jim?
Sure. Okay.
Yes, sir.
State subsidies, 14-9, over, 14-7, it looks as though you've figured, a conservative figure there, 200,000.
Well, um-
How does that compare with what might be a 500, it looks closer to a 500,000, at least projection?
Yeah, if you look at the columns, I have the 13, 14 actual numbers, and I have in the center there our current budget, the RIN, 14-15. And of course, you know, two main areas that I have in, highlighted in peach, still have to be-
Exactly.
Still have to be filled in.
Yeah. Well, on that then, so-
So theoretically speaking-
So last year, I mean, if, if the, if the governor and the legislator come through as something closer to 500, then we could see a, I was just trying to compare that 500, that 5% increase compared to last year. It could be several hundred thousand more-
Yes.
-that we would be getting.
Yes. Definitely.
On the revenue side?
Correct. Correct.
Any more questions? Hearing none. Hi, Mr. Marnell. You are welcome. All business. E-RIP. We had a request to see if there's interest from the board to put on the agenda for next week to change the language. Give me one second and I'll find the exact point. They would like the wording to be changed from-
Go ahead.
Right now, the wording says, "Be at least 55 years of age with a minimum of 10 years of continuous service in this school district, and have at least 20 years of service in the public school employee's retirement system." And the request was to change the "and" to an "or," so that they could meet either qualification. And we wanted to see if there's enough interest in the board to put that on the agenda for next week to vote on that. They would still have to have their request in by April 1st, so we will know upon that to work on all the things that need to be done after that. Any discussions?
The general notion there is that would perhaps get us a couple more retirees.
Yes, you can put on the agenda and they can vote up or down.
Yes.
Anybody with comments?
All right, folks, we'll have that on the agenda for next week also.
New business, approve revisions to policy 006 and 903?
Right, policy 006 was our policy on meetings, and 903 was on public participation in meetings. I included those drafts for you, and those drafts all include the, the discussion we had at our January and February meetings. So they've been posted for actually more than 30 days because of the way the meetings felt. So we would ask that you would consider approving those policies at our next meeting.
When the committee got together to discuss those policies, we never really got finished, and we have a copy to send around to see if there's interest in adding this to the policy to be voted on, which is a new comment card, which is basically the same at the bottom, but the top half of the card would have the rules for citizens' comments, so someone can say that, "I didn't know I could question such and such," or, "I didn't know that you weren't going to answer me," and just different things like that. So you can look at that card, give us the idea if we should add that to the motion for next week and put it on the agenda, or if you don't have any interest in having that as part of the- Item for next week?
You need to have action, I think, just go ahead and put it on back of the card, didn't you?
And it saves you needing to read that at every meeting, which seems kind of redundant to, to need to do it. It seems like an administrative thing.
Well, it's part of the policy, it's in the policy, that card is in the policy, so that's why we need to vote to approve or not approve. Am I right?
Yes.
Good.
Okay, you can put that on the agenda, that's nodding heads.
Okay. We'll just attach that to the back of the policy.
Approve revisions to following policies, 004, board membership?
Right, and I'm just going to get down the list here, 004, 302, these are all policies that we've talked about before, 304, 305, employment of professional employee, substitute professional employee, summer school staff. 307, I'd like you to put a line through that right now. In speaking with PSBA, there are some language issues that they're having with their template that, that don't quite match the law at this point. So they're coming out with a new iteration of that policy. If it's out by next week, I will, I will certainly give it to you and we can vote on it, but if it's not, I'd like to table that policy until such time as we get their final copy, so we don't have to do it twice. 309 was assignment and transfer, 317 is disciplinary procedures for employees. Policy 818 was contracted services. 317.1, educator misconduct. And again, those are all pretty much the boilerplate from PSBA's legal and policy department, just to keep us in line with the current statute. And then, in order to streamline what's going on, the way our policy manual is set up now, if you remember, we had a section for professional employees, a section for administrative employees, and a section for classified and non-classified employees. So now we just have, we want to have a section called employees. So that would be all under section 300. So policies 404, 405, 406, 407, 409, and 417 would then become redundant with what we've already done, so we would ask you to abolish those policies, because they're already covered in, in the 300 policies.
Any questions or comments on that?
We talked a good bit about, you know, most of these last months, so you've all been pretty well briefed on them.
2015-16 Student Assistance Program?
Right, every year we, we do an agreement with St. Vincent College to help to operate our student assistance program. We would ask that you would approve that for next year.
Questions? Hearing none. 2014-15 Adelphi Contract?
Right, that's, uh, this year's contract for partial hospitalization services with Adelphi Village. That was just sent to us this past week. I don't believe we have any students right now involved in the partial hospitalization program, but we always like to have that contract in place, because you never know when we're going to have someone, you know, who would be assigned to that program.
Questions or comments? Hearing none. 2015-16 New Directions Agreement?
Right, New Directions is, is another partial hospitalization program. It's in Union Town, it's run through Chestnut Ridge Mental Health. We, we keep a contract open with them as well, and occasionally we have a need, you know, to send a student there for a partial hospitalization situation.
Questions? Hearing none. Adoption of Policy 808.1?
Right, 808.1 deals with student meal charges, and basically that policy memorializes what we have been doing right along, but, but it brings it into a policy situation, and that has to do with the fact that there's now a new regulation that says any outstanding student meal charges at the end of the year are no longer absorbed by the cafeteria fund, but rather become part of the general fund. During the last week, there was a little bit of controversy, Mrs. Huggins received a couple of phone calls regarding a situation about meal charging. One of our students had exceeded their limit of charges, I think in the particular building where it was, it's two. And when you have two outstanding charges, then the policy has been that you receive an alternate meal. And the individual didn't feel that the alternate meal was an acceptable school lunch, I guess. So Mrs. Huggins asked me, and I did distribute these, I, I gave you all the copy of what the alternate meal looks like, and in this case, it's a cheese sandwich on a whole wheat bun, there's a fruit, a milk, a salad, and a starch, which, all of those, that meets the, the minimum requirement for a school lunch. So, you know, when we give someone an alternate lunch because they have exceeded their charge limit, it's not like we're giving them bread and water, but, but rather just that they don't get the main entree, they get the cheese sandwich and everything else. So I wanted to just kind of get out ahead of that and make you aware of that as well. Yes?
Just a question on that, though. At what point does a student realize that they're not going to get the regular lunch?
Generally, several days before, our, our ladies-
Someone tells the student that the-
Yeah, when they key into the, they key their lunch into the point-of-service system, generally the cafeteria ladies will say, you know what, you're, you're down to two lunches, you might want to have mom and dad put something on your account, you're down to one lunch, you know? So they do get some-
So they're warned before this happens?
Yes.
It just doesn't automatically happen and then-
I, I don't believe so. That's true, yeah, you can set it up so that you get an email.
That's a good idea.
And on the account that I have with the cafeteria, I, I get a low balance notice, usually quite often, because I only keep about five options in there. I don't eat in the cafeteria real often. So, yeah, so there are mechanisms in place.
So they're made aware of it before they don't get, go through the line, and then after they're through the line told that the-
No, and actually, I mean, they, they know, because they've already charged once and gotten the-
I see, okay.
-full meal deal. They charge a second time and got the full meal deal, and then on, on number three, that's, that's when the alternate meal occurs.
Okay.
Can I ask, was it in, what's scored, was this high school, primary?
It was this building.
It was this building?
Yeah. And, and Mrs. Huggins, we, we talked about this at great length at our administrative meeting yesterday. She indicated at the primary center that there's a little bit more leniency, and then as, you know, students get older, they, they take a little bit more responsibility for telling mom and dad that, you know, they're getting low on lunch monies.
That optional, that email, that was something that was optional for you to do as a parent?
Yes.
Okay.
Does it work, do, do most parents, like, you would pay in so much, 10, 20 dollars?
Yeah.
And then use it, rather than the-
And sometimes even like-
Person bringing everyday, bringing-
Right, right, yeah, sometimes, and they can actually do that online, you know, with a charge card, or, or sometimes they'll bring in a check, and usually it's, you know, 40 or 50 or 60 dollars, and then that lasts them for, you know, a good little bit of time. So it's not like, back when, when I was in school, we had to pay our 35 cents to get a plastic token.
Every day.
No, we don't have those anymore either, so it's all, it's all computerized and all on an account.
On that system, parents can also set up alerts. So a student, you know, a parent can say that they only want their child to be able to spend one entree meal a day.
Right.
So they can, the observers will contact them to let them know.
You can also go back and see what your children are eating.
Yeah.
Like, it tells you if they're, you know, eating too many, or, you know.
Getting extra ice cream along the way.
Yeah, you can go back and see what they're eating.
Always. They never, they never stop.
So we'll, we'll ask you to approve 808.1 as well.
Any more questions on that, comments? Approve over overnight trip?
The, the last item I have, we had some students who qualified for Allstate Honors, Ben in Hershey, and those individuals were Katie Kimmel, Blaze Wizneski, and Jason Monroe. So that would be March 25, which is a Wednesday through Saturday, March 28, at the Hershey Lodge and Convention Center. So we would ask that you would approve that as well.
Any questions? Citizens comments? Seeing none, anybody else on the board have anything before we go to executive session? Any?
I actually have two things. I, the one that I wanted to bring up, looking into robo-call, but you guys are already checked, okay.
Yeah, just to tell you a little bit about robo-call, Mr. Pushkar did some research for us, and he's recommending School Messenger. And John, you want to talk a little bit about how that's going to be set up and, you know, when, when it can start and-
Yeah, after the incidents that we've had and the weather that we've had, you know, we figured it's about time that we get something like that. I put feelers out, talked to the other school districts in Westmoreland County, got, you know, an idea of what everybody else was using. And there's a couple different ones, but the one that seemed to be the most, not exactly tied to any specific system, like your student information system, some systems out there are, you know, like hinged into your student information system, and the School Messenger seemed like a little more robust, it would take just about any system, and you can import, take your contact information, your email addresses, your home phone numbers, your cellphone numbers, whatever. Contacted them, got some pricing, it seemed, you know, fairly reasonable for all it does. It's web-based, you can get on, have it, just make a robo-call, like grandparents, they don't have smartphones, they don't, I don't get a text message, but I would like to know. We can phone call you and play an automated message. So you can go onto the system, tell it to, Dr. Molnar wants to record a message, have the system call my phone. My phone rings, you know, record your message as the beep, you know, "Southmoreland School District is operating on a two-hour delay." Tuesday, you know, whatever date. Hang up, boom, that's now your recorded message. You can then say, okay, your message is available, pick your group to who you'd like to distribute that to, or send that to all users, plus accompany that also with an additional text message for the people that prefer to receive it as a text message, or, you know, as an email. So it'll do all three different types of, of contacting. We can also utilize the system for other purposes, rather than just calling parents, we can also call faculty and staff. We, right now, as things are, we have established a phone chain. So when there's a two-hour delay to alert our teachers, we have a secretary call one teacher, and they call two friends, and they call two friends, and so. I, you know, I didn't have my phone on when the message came through, but I'm the next person in line. A bunch of people may not get their message. So we can utilize this system as well. Dr. Molnar puts in the message that we're operating on a two-hour delay, boom, all our teachers get the message too. And we could also use it for alerting faculty and staff to a situation that we have without making an announcement. Yeah, there, there's a lot of different ways that we can utilize a system like this, so.
The price of the system, like you said, if you can text, you can do an email, you can do it by phone, the price of the system depend on what, if you decide to do all three, it doesn't make any difference?
No, no, we're charged on a per student, per year basis, based on your enrollment. Your enrollment goes down, your price goes down, your enrollment goes up, your price goes up per year. It's a dollar eighty per student. It's a dollar eighty per student, which roughly comes out to under $3,500 per year. And if you think that's, you know, $300 a month.
And we did sign a letter of intent with this group, and because we were able to do that now, very shortly, they'll be setting us up, and we'll be able to use this on a preview basis at no cost until the new fiscal year.
Right. We're actually getting to try before we buy. We get to use it for the rest of the, this school year. They don't require a purchase order, you know, payment until July 1.
Should've had it a week earlier, huh?
Right.
Any more questions? Just that? Oh, okay.
I, I also would like the board to look into, or administration to look into going to an, like, an iPad system. We use this at the IU. We don't get this. We get an agenda on the iPad. I hooked it up to my phone. It's okay, it's going off my phone. And we get everything, it's right on an iPad. We get an email saying, we use, it's called the Moodle. So we get an email saying that everything's up on the Moodle, and we can go right in and look at it. I can look at all of last year's agendas. I can look at all of last year's minutes. They're all still on here. And we have, like, our email system from the IU's on it, and it's, it's, it's great because we don't go through reams and reams of paper and, you know, if, if, if we would decide to change something, they could go in and change it on the agenda. We don't have to print out a whole nother set of agenda papers. Anything that, like, if Mr. Marnell wanted to send us all something right before the meeting, he could just, you know, email it to our iPads, and we have everything right there. And it's, it's, it's really nice to use. And it's very easy to use.
Yeah, a lot of districts have gone to this. I know the IU's been doing it for a number of years. They, they use a program, I think it's through PSBA, most of them-
Yeah, I think so.
Called Board Docs.
Board Docs, and School Docs.
I, I think, you know, we can support your idea. We've actually talked about it off and on for the last couple of years. As, as you know, you know, we have the, the cost of labor and getting things to you, and on some days, they're delivering to you when we need them to be plowing snow or doing some other things. You know, the, the paper, the duplicating, all, all of those things. So there's an initial investment to begin with in terms of the, the electronics, because the individuals who may not have their own iPads would certainly, you know, would need to provide those. But then everything would be, would be on an online document. And as Amy said, you have your archives. So you remember last week when we talked about thus and such, and we can scroll back and see them?
It's all right there. Anybody wants to look at, they can too.
Is there interest in looking into this?
Seeing a lot of nodding heads, so we'll, we'll get to work on that and-
We get a tutor for lunch. We get a tutor for lunch.
Yeah, yeah.
How does it work out on the interview? Do, do, you can use your own, you can bring your own, or you can, or you can, is, for example, is that one provided by the IU?
This one is provided. This is from the IU. But I have my own, I can, you know?
Sure.
But this one is provided.
Now, that's provided by the IU.
Yes.
Could, can we, would we be able to put ours on that one? Because would that be-
Yeah, the, the way it works is, we would put it on, on the web.
Right, and then, and then since you have an iPad, you can pull it up.
If you have an iPad, yeah. For example, our superintendents association, everything's done on, on the Moodle in terms of our agendas and so on. The IU doesn't give us iPads, we, we all have our own. Or in some cases, computers, on a laptop. We just go to a certain web address and bang, there it is.
Since the IU paid for that-
Pull it up from there.
Right, they wouldn't restrict you because the IU provided it, they wouldn't restrict you and say, no, you can't use it for anything other than IU.
I don't know what the legality there would be.
The person who had it before me used it for Disney stuff because they have-
There you go. That answers the question.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, there's other stuff on here.
I think whatever, you know, we would be in, in line with our, with our electronic device policy that we, that we have in place. It would be used, you know, in that regard.
Any more questions or comments on that?
All right, we'll look into that and get back to you with, with the report.
Any other board members have anything else? You had a motion to adjourn to executive session for personnel and-
Student discipline.
Student discipline, the motion to adjourn.
And, uh, real estate leasing as well, Mr. Potters.
And real estate leasing, motion for Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second, Mr. Paul Kosky. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? What about the lieutenant agreement?